Standing, I think I saw our chaplain Minister White, if you don't mind, uh, pray, give us a prayer, please.
Father God, we thank you, Lord God, for having us together, and we thank you for blessing us, you know, God. Father, we thank you, Lord God, that we can assemble back in this place, Lord God, a place that belongs to us as a community, Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, that we have a new leadership again, Lord God, that is continuing to take care of the business and, Lord God. We thank you for the triumphant experience of this one quarter of your administration, oh, God. And we just thank you, Lord God, that we can come together and unite, brotherly, Lord God. The good will be done, bring new light to our village, Lord God, and we just thank you and honor you and worship you, Lord God.
Amen.
Okay, we will open up with public comment. So I'll ask anybody who has comments for the board at this time, please come up, we'll have a three minute, uh, maximum. I will comment or note to everybody, this is our first committee of the whole, all items on the agenda are for discussion only. No action will be taken this evening, uh, so just, uh, as it's a word of information. So three minutes for anybody who has comments.
Oh, money, so.
Nope.
Oh, yes. I'm donating.
Mike donation.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Oh, wow.
My baby, I'm actually a thorny teacher. And when I found out that, um, the Pope was born, so, or raised in Dalton, it really touched me.
From the hood, oh.
I decided with the principal and the art that he had made it to donate. Uh, I asked the principal to charge the donation. So they have a picture of the two benches that their interior benches, uh, surround the Pope and Dalton.
Oh, wow.
Raised here. And so I, I was very touched with that because everybody in the world wants to be a part of their community. And so for him, he had come out of Dalton, it was really incredible to me. And so I wanted to give this to the mayor.
Oh.
This is, uh, I'll read it. It says, uh, Pope Leo, the fourth team man donated to Mayor Jason. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Pope Leo, the fourth season donated to Mayor Jason House and the village of Dalton. From TTH, superintendent Dr. Cunningham, principal, Mr. Whittaker, board president, Mr. Graham, with myself, and every. Mr. Wright is really a prominent artist, he's been on TV and everything, and I just wanted, I just felt touched that he was from this community. So I wanted to give this to the mayor.
Thank you.
God bless you. Oh, thank you.
The bench is very nice.
And you can show.
Mm-hmm.
It's an interior bench, so. All right, bless you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the last place I expected to find the agendas, I've been looking for one all day. But I finally got the agenda, and I'm still playing catch-up, but I just wanted to, um, note a couple of things that, uh, I've noticed, uh, since the administration took place. I mean, it has taken office. Um, today, forgive me, I'm usually a little bit behind on these things, I'm not as adept in public media as some of you guys. But I noticed that they have a, a September calendar of events that encompasses everything Dalton does, uh, from, uh, the, the meeting to the public library, to the park district. And today's the first day I ever saw that, so forgive me if I'm late. But I think that's a great idea, because folks like me, uh, usually go around asking where, who, what, what, you know? So that, that, that's, that's progress right there, because that can keep us advised as to what we want to go to, when we want to go to it, and have the, you know, correct information. So we won't be shuttling back and forth between Village Hall and the Park District, because sometimes we're not a hundred percent sure where everything is, you know, since we reopened our building here. Uh, during, uh, this Saturday's team with the trustees, there was a quite a bit of discussion about garbage disposal and things of that nature. So I just happened to be standing outside, and I've noticed, noted this before. One thing that we as citizens can do, because I, everybody pretty much touched on what home with disposal should do. One thing that we could do as individuals is when you throw your trash out, don't leave it loose inside the bin. If you leave it loose like you do an indoor trash, trash can, the wind is going to catch a lot of it, and you're going to end up with that stuff all over the place. So that's one thing we can do, we can bag up everything we can, if you can bag this stuff up, when you throw it in the garbage can, that would be very helpful, you know, to everybody. Keep our community looking good, and that's, that's just one small thing that we can do as, as, uh, citizens. I really didn't have a lot to say, because basically, I'm just going over here and read this agenda, because I don't know what the hell is going on. But, uh, it's been a pleasure, and, uh, really enjoying, uh, our new, our newfound freedom. You all have a good day.
Thank you.
Oh. I gotta give, uh, for that unified, uh, flyer with the dates, I gotta give credit to, I think, Nikita Cloud and Warren on the video team, on the media team, because that's a, it is a united effort. And when I seen that, so that's a great idea, so you can see with everything that's going on in the village, it's not three separate, it's three separate governments, but we're all united. And that's real spirit of Dalton United. So give shout, shout out to Nikita Cloud and Warren on our media team.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to thank the mayor, the board of trustees. I want to thank Samisha, the chief of staff, Marcus, the community liaison, Brian Thigpen, Butch, the superintendent of public works, for the assistance that they gave in getting the Pope's house ready for the celebration that we had yesterday. As village chaplain and newly appointed village chaplain, um, I was honored to be able to put that together with the help of trustee Tammy Brown, uh, to bring awareness of the Pope's house to our village. I am looking forward to many more things to come, and as Mayor House said on yesterday, that this will be an annual event every year that we will celebrate the Pope's birthday in front of his home. And so I'm looking forward to the things that we're going to be able to bring to the village, not just in celebrating the Pope, but celebrating the fact of good things are coming out of our village. And so because good things are coming out of our village, and it's evident by what we have sitting up here this evening, we as a community are finally coming together to unify this village and bring it back to what it used to be. And so I'm grateful that God has chosen me as a vessel. The mayor and the board of trustees have given me an assignment to do, as well as God has, to help move this along. So, and I thank all the residents that were able to come out and celebrate with us on yesterday, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for receiving that assignment. So if I hear no other comments at this time, we'll conclude public comment and move into general announcements, any general announcements?
Yes, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Uh, yes, trustee Belcher.
Okay, I have, uh, three. On September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, the Dalton Police Department is doing their car show, which is at one forty-nine hundred Greenwood. It starts at six P.M. I believe the last one is October twelfth, so they are, uh, still continuing to do their car show. Also that night is our community gang night, which starts at six P.M., also at one forty-two hundred Martin Luther King Drive. So if anyone is interested in coming out to our community game night, um, please feel free to do so. And I want to highlight, uh, our resource hub, we've been working on a resource hub right now. Envision Unlimited is in there Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So this is our faith-based, uh, mental health, just resources that we need for our community. Um, as me and trustee Brown definitely have been working on other entities that have come to the resource hub, because we want to make things available for our residents and our constituents. Um, Seda, I did speak with them, since it starts in October, they will be able to start coming once a week, just as an intake. Uh, when I get the confirmed date, I will make sure that it's placed on the internet. But we want to make sure that those resources are in our community. Um, trustee Brown, have you spoke to the other person?
For Seda, or what?
For the exclamation.
Oh, yes, so we got someone for the exclamation, and someone else for veterans assistance. And they are working with the chief of staff on setting the dates and times, that they will be here also for the, uh, resource hub.
So we just want to make sure that we keep reiterating these things, because, uh, our, our village, as, um, everyone saying we're working together, we're Dalton United, so if we have, are we, if we are able to have resources that our community deserves, then we want to make sure that you're able to get to it. And Meals on Wheels will start, uh, November first for seniors, so Meals on Wheels is coming back to Dalton. You say November first, okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, thanks, sir. Sam, I'm.
Okay, thanks trustee, uh, trustee Stan Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd just like to add with that, uh, a body delivery Christmas and a passive fleshman in our deacon board, uh, within hope no one need any sandbag, but we have sandbag if anyone needs. Just hopefully we don't get that type of rain, we can get this flooding basement, so if anyone need any, uh, sandbags, uh, passive fleshman in our deacon board, we will make a delivery to you. You can contact myself at seven zero eight nine six eight four eight nine seven. That's seven zero eight nine six eight four eight nine seven. If anyone in the village Dalton need any sandbags, hopefully you don't need them, but we do have some sandbags, and we can make a delivery to you, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, trustee.
Can I bounce back on that, just because he stated, um, Dr. Scott with the ABBA Center is doing a, um, if you had any type of flood damage and they, and you need items removed, they are doing it for free. It's through Dr. Scott and the ABBA Center. Um, so I know they have been talking to a lot of different residents that had water damage from the last flood. But if you do have that, please contact them at one four, uh, Dr. Scott at the ABBA Center, one forty-two hundred Martin Luther King Drive, because they are doing this for free to the village of Dalton residents. They will remove anything out of the area that has been damaged and have it taken off the premises. So, uh, I know there are people that still may need those type of services, that's it. May I be recognized, Mayor?
Uh, yes, trustee, Tammy Brown.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to say thank you again for yesterday, um, an awesome event, well worth it. Uh, working hard, strong for an entire week, and just want to say thank you to the fantastic employees, um, that we have working for the village of Dalton. When I say when you called, they showed up and showed out, and they also beautified the whole entire area, um, for that event, and they're doing work in all the areas. So I want to say a thank you, uh, to Bunch, his crew, to Samisha, to community, uh, community liaison, and to Brian Thigpen and his staff, an awesome job that these employees are doing. So definitely want to say thank you, and let them know that they are totally, uh, recognized and doing a great job for the village of Dalton. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Tammy. Trustee Steve.
I would say, um, in the spirit of, uh, good government, uh, we've been used to one meeting a month for the last three years, three, four years. And when we got in, we got in the summer months, there's only one meeting a month, but we have to train ourselves back to two meetings a month and discussion. And that's the way good government set up, committee of the whole, we're not making, we're not taking no votes now, we're discussing it for the community to see, give you input, and then the next meeting, we vote on it. So we've been missing that, uh, for the last three years, three and something years, but not three, I said three hundred, three years. But I just want to say that I'm, I'm proud that we're bringing this back, and it's, it shouldn't have ever left, but that's where we're at now. So we gotta get adjusted to the first and the third Monday again, because we've been used to one meeting a month. And it was, everybody was looking forward to that one meeting. But first and third meetings back to, you know, they say boring meetings, but we're discussing stuff professional and really moving our village forward. So I just want to make that announcement.
Thank you very much, trustee. So with that, we are going to conclude the general announcements portion and move right into our first order of business. Uh, first up on, first up, we have a presentation by Rucker Athletics, Dr. DeAndre Rucker. Uh, want to talk about a great proposal for the village of Dalton to restore or rehab formerly the Melanie Fitness Center. So I ask if you come on up and let the community know what's in discussion.
How you guys doing? So at the door, we gave away a free, they call shakers, uh, with Ruck Athletics on them as well. So our plan and what's in discussion with the board and with the mayor is to read, well, Melanie Fitness Center slash the police station courthouse. The plan is to make it a fitness center again. Um, bring up the pool back up to a code, uh, put the workout equipment in there, have inside of you guys shaker, it's a list of things we want to have as far as aqua. Um, at the top, it said we're fat, where families get fit. From, from our understanding, that's the beginning of generational wealth is health. Um, with that being said, active minds and bodies is an after-school daily fitness program. But that does, it give your kids, if you're still at work and your kid's getting out of school and they're going home by theirself, they can come to the gym now and get a workout and get, uh, after-school training program to help with their schoolwork. And if they're doing bad in a certain class, we can see their report cards and give them different incentives from that. Uh, from there, we have Timeless Fatality Club, which is senior health and mobility program. That is aqua swimming for seniors, a certain class for seniors, uh, walking classes for seniors as well. Um, a wellness clinic that will be for male and female that is in there, a aqua fitness class, uh, Rucker Rising Stars. But that is a youth sports, uh, expansion program that we have, it's called with the Rucker Rebels. We give scholarships to other kids to go into college, and we help them with that program as well. Um, next thing is Everybody Strong, that's our general membership. Rucker Cafe and Rucker Juice It is our two biggest things. A lot of, not just children, but a lot of adults, when you done working out, you go to McDonald's or Burger King. That's a problem, it don't make sense. So at this, we'll do meal preps. So you can sign up for a meal prep and say, hey, I know I'm coming to the gym Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. When you leave the gym, you have brown rice and salmon to go home with, so you can eat something healthy before you go home. And the juice bar is pretty much juicing all natural fruits for different things as well, any questions? I ran through it, I know.
I'll defer to the board, see if there's any questions, I know there were a few, uh, lease proposals that were, uh, presented, I don't know if the board had questions at the time. I don't, I have an history with, um.
Uh, we on, uh, everybody who works out, I usually go to the Kayauna City or some other, uh, village to do, to work out. So it'd be a good thing for, to have a pool here, and the way we, uh, uh, water rubs helps with people who, uh, have joint problems. I know with my legs, uh, the water rubs really helps me, so I know that's a good thing. And, uh, I look forward to that coming here, and I didn't know about the, the meal prep and, uh, the juice bar, that's really good. Uh, which is a big thing nowadays, meal prep.
Yep.
Well, and I'll speak too, I know the, uh, pool has been, the pool and the, and the gym being available is something that we know the community has, uh, been very interested in. So we definitely appreciate the proposal and the desire to fix up our fitness center, um, and to do this for community and to make it a better place. So certainly appreciate that, if you may elaborate a little bit on you, what your timeline that you'll be looking at to fix this, to fix the facility?
Yeah, so.
And, and I'll, I'll guess I'll take the lead, the intention is that we get this started September twenty-ninth. Um, should the board be, uh, should the board be in agreement, um, and community as well, that's why we have this community, com, committee of the whole, uh, discussion. So concerns or anything else, please be sure to address the board prior to our upcoming, our, up to, our upcoming meeting. Uh, but we would like to make sure that we're able to get things going as quickly as possible, uh, but also let individuals know what's, what we're considering in the community.
So with that, the plan is, uh, Black Friday, because we know everybody eat a lot on Thanksgiving. So right after that, come right to the gym. So you could go little shop and then come work out a little bit. So that's, uh, we looking at Black Friday, opening day, we're looking at Black Friday.
Okay.
May I, may I be recognized?
Uh, yes, trustee.
Um, so for full transparency and finance, because I'm the finance chair, um, Mr. Dr. DeAndre Rucker has, uh, made it that he will be paying for the restoration in the pool. I know many people said, or have come to us talking about the fact that when the old administration was here, we were against it. It wasn't about us being against it, it was about we didn't have the finances to complete it and do it. It, the Melanie's Fitness Center requires finances, it requires an upkeep, it re, it requires, uh, staff, which we don't financially, we don't financially have the ability to do that. So, um, being able for someone else to come in and take on their responsibility, and it relieves the village of those issues. Although it's still our property, it'll be leased, but it will relieve us from those issues that we didn't have. So it wasn't about us not wanting it, it was about us not being financially sound to make it happen.
Yeah, and I had to add to that, the, in its current capacity, the facility is costing us, uh, at minimum ninety thousand dollars per year just to maintain utilities and space and other miscellaneous expenses. Trustee Stan. Yeah, we'll open up for, uh, we'll, we'll take, we'll take up to four questions. Okay, so I'll, uh, let trustee, uh, Stan Brown, and then I'll.
What you just read, uh, you, you sound a little bit.
I can give you one. I'll go through it, if you want me to go through it, I could run you through it real fast.
Send the steam people, take a plate home, which you have to leave, so that, that's how you, I'm just looking at the maintenance, that's a lot of maintenance to come with that. You gonna pick up that tap?
Yeah, yeah, Mike.
Trustee, too. Yeah, I'm looking at the maintenance, uh, Dr. Rucker, and, uh, that maintenance is a, is a heavy bill to, to carry. So are you, uh, established enough and pick up this here load?
I'm, I'm established enough, but I will be looking towards the board to help out with some of the maintenance, I'm glad you brought that up, sir. Um, with the membership that we plan on bringing in, that should be able to take care of majority of the maintenance. Everything else should be taken care with other programs that we bringing in. Uh, the Silver Sneaker Program, which those who have insurance, you pretty much could go to any gym and sign up, and your insurance company will pay for that. Um, but then the proposal I did, put some things in the proposal, uh, addressing the board to see if you guys thought, might we can negotiate or something?
Yeah, okay, I figured we need to do a little negotiating, because you carrying a heavy load with this here maintenance. You know, and I'm a stickler for the grass, weeds, and trees and all that, and then that's, that's maintenance weekly, so you guys can handle that. That'd be nice.
I'm, I definitely appreciate you, we'll handle the grass if you handle the light bill, we'll definitely talk about it. Fine with it.
Well, we go, we, we go, we go get, we go get you up there with solar, uh, we go put some solar panels up there.
Now I'mma hold you to that, now, y'all, I'mma hold them to it, so.
But wait, but we did talk, you supposed to talk with the, with the solar man, you gotta get three more votes.
Three more votes?
Stan Brown, you got some work to do, trustee Brown, man, you got us, come on.
Okay, no, uh, trustee, did that conclude your question, I'm sorry, did that conclude your question?
That concludes my question.
Okay, uh, we're gonna open for four questions from, uh, residents, uh, so Ms. Mary first, and then we'll come right, right down. Okay, okay, yes, sir.
Are you going to bring in new exercise equipment?
Yes, we have, uh, a lot of exercise equipment we already purchased, that's already available, because we was looking for another spot already. But we, we found some equipment that was kind of a, I said a discounted price, that was good equipment, so we purchased it already.
Uh, yeah, Dan, and then we'll do one more.
Black Friday.
I got a microphone in my hand, though. I told y'all, some days I'm here, some days I'm not. But anyway. Okay. So if I had to resent anything, now's the time to do it, all right? But I was just gonna suggest, you know, get that first big rush in before the opening, uh, among the people of Dalton, and I'm, I'm pretty sure you're gonna take everybody in the south service, I would guess, yeah. And so I would much rather invest our, you know, little memberships with, uh, this group, I mean, you know, with this gym than somewhere else.
I appreciate that, so we do have advertisement ready to roll out, we're just waiting on pretty much all documentation, everything with the board. Once we in agreements, we'll start rolling out our membership packages and all the advertising.
Okay, final question in the back?
All right, Walter Randolph, Village, uh, Dust Leder, so you said something about pricing, and you don't have any, like, membership pricing or anything? You said something about juicing?
Yeah, so the juice, the juice bar and everything could be separate, that's a separate price. It's like going to a health food store and you want to get a juice, so it'd be different pricing for that. The membership packages are different packages just as well, that'll roll out and not advertise, to advertisement rollout.
Okay, so there's no pricing yet available?
Well, not at, not at this moment until we.
Okay.
Me and the board have an agreement on a few other things first.
And as far as the juicing is concerned, will there be smoothies as well?
Yes.
Um, I'm, sorry, one more thing. The equipment that you said that you brought in, that you got at a discounted rate, I'm not sure exactly what they have in there, but as far as the swimming pool, aqua aerobics, will there be a steam room, jacuzzi, sauna, anything?
So you have steam room, jacuzzi, pool, a kid pool, sauna, we also bringing in caro therapy as well. Uh, for those who have, like, some, uh, a lot of people use, athletes that get arthritis, it's pretty much like a cold bath, jumping in the cold bath. This is handheld, though, so it helps you out. Now, instead of jumping in a cold bath, they have it handheld, where it'll freeze it, and it gets you back where you need to be, so, yeah.
One last thing, what about massage shifts? One last thing, what about massage chairs?
Massage chairs?
Massage chairs or muscles.
We will have massage chairs, but we gonna have the ones you gotta slap the $2 in, so you can pay for.
I asked because I.
I got to understand.
Right now, you have all of that stuff. Was there anything different or beneficial?
No, the, um, not to cut you off, but the plan is to have everything where you don't have to go to another gym. So if that's something that if we don't have it and we see a lot of members asking for it, we'll love to make sure we have it. Uh, we also been talking to Athletico as well. It's coming in to help with massage therapy and things like that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay, I think we have one. I heard one question, trustee Steve.
I would say there, there's still, uh, some, some of the old equipment was still useful, uh, from the gym that was taken out. Some of that stuff is still very much used for the benches and the free weights. So I know that stuff is still over there. So take advantage of that once we get this thing on.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Okay, I think that will, uh, conclude the questions. There is, this will also facilitate a, a few other changes. Currently our courts, that, uh, court for traffic and grass fines is over at the Melanie Fitness Center. That will be moving to Village Hall on Thursdays. Uh, we will be having an adjusted schedule for Village Hall, uh, which will, it, which will be Monday through Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So opening up one hour early. Thursdays will close for courts. Friday will be open again, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Saturday we'll have a short day for those who are unavailable, they can't, or, or who are at work during the week. They can make it into Village Hall. Is it 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM or 9:00 AM? 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. So that will be, uh, there will be information put online as well as in our mailers. There's already been some things posted online, but we want to make sure that everybody is aware of the changes. With that, let's see if you can move a walk.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, everybody. All right. Next, we have a presentation regarding abandoned property and, and property acquisitions. Attorney Jacqueline, is it a G? A.G.? Uh, trustee Norwood's outside? Oh, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll come to yours, uh, a, a bit in a moment. All right. Next, we have discussion on accounting, on accounting firm, uh, trustee Belcher. And if you'd like, uh, say maybe I'm trying to come, did you have, well, did you want to come up? All right, good. So John, if you wanna come up to, like, for discussion?
You, oh, you just want me to start talking?
Oh, yeah, what's your, your?
I mean, um, the reason this has been placed on the agenda is, um, over the last, and I'll just say, starting from the new mayor, moving forward, we really have been trying to make sure that we get finances in order. Um, we have to start from scratches. Some places, some places, there's information that we may have and we're not getting. Um, I'm glad you guys did come, but we're at a point where, um, and there has been several conversations back and forth via email that we're not getting information that we feel that can give us a solid ground of where we actually are financially for our community. Um, I have been upset about it. The mayor knows. I've made some, um, emails about it. I've asked for information and we're just trying to make sure that we're doing right by the village financially. So I put it on the agenda to either, um, the fin- um, finance account firm can give us some feedback on when we will be able to get items that we need so we can have a solid stance on where we are right now. Or should we start moving to look for another accounting firm? So that's why this is placed on the agenda today.
Thank you, trustee, uh, trustees, mayor, and the public as well. I think everyone knows that the struggles we've been dealing with at the village with respect to the finances. It's not easy to say any, to say the least. There's just so many different areas that you come in the work and there's a new fire that needs the attention. And it, uh, it gets difficult to decipher which is the most important and which isn't. But with respect to, to you specifically today, trustee Abelter, we have, I've, uh, I've sat down with, with Lauren. I've also sat with my other partner and we put together a schedule which we sent to the mayor. The, the financial statements are done through June and that just came out, I believe, that just came out today. And there is a goal, we're going to prioritize that over other fires. And we'll just say, we're gonna make sure that the financial statements do come out on a timely basis. We put together a schedule, uh, we just put it out today to the mayor as far as would this work? So he has it. He was reviewing it. If it does, uh, it does appear that we should be able to hold to that schedule. Again, it just comes to, we're also dealing with, also trying to watch our time. We are training a new person. Thank you. I've been asking to get some help here at the village. So that is really great. And as the new person, and probably could use another one too, I think in turn, just to be very honest, it'll reduce our fees and probably can pay for the, pay for that person just through that. But we are look, we are working right now on training, um, the new individual. In fact, we have some more ideas about, uh, one of them was bounced off the mayor prior to the meeting, uh, on how we might be able to use the new individual that's working here. I mean, it takes time to train, understand. Uh, but I think we have a plan together that will at least address getting the financial statements together. While we've always had them, but now we're gonna put them in a, in a situation where we'll have them out with the outstanding checks, with the, uh, the unpaid checks from the prior bank account. And I think we'll be able to answer all of the questions and also asking the trustees too, to please make sure if there's specific questions when you're, when you're dealing with my staff, to please make sure I'm at least CC'd on them, on all of them. You know, if it's something you're looking for, I should be on it. That way I can definitely follow up to make sure. But, um, Lawrence here, and I know Lauren has met probably everybody on the board. Lauren, by the way, is my, is my manager in our accounting firm that handles the village of Dalton. We, we go back to the Riley Rogers days. So, uh, we've been here for a while. We haven't, we know what's out here. It's just sometimes trying to put it together. So does that kinda answer? I mean, I can come up with some more specifics.
No, uh, I think we are discussing, uh, it was just that this, for committee of the whole, we have to, and even, I'm glad that you mentioned that it's September and we're, we're just now getting statements for June, which brings concern because we wanna know. Um, I did, um, talked to the new accounts payable person. And I had asked her to ask about, um, I know when Lori Leifer did the report, there was a portal where I guess y'all just doc, dumped like a lot of information. Because if she's able, we, we brought her in to relieve y'all from some of the things that's going on. So we can start gaining a finance department versus just holding, having an accounting firm do so much. Because it, it costs way more and, you know, it relinquished time for you guys to do something else, whether it be audits or MFT, whatever it is that you guys have to do. Uh, I just wanted to know, like, is there something that she can have access to? We can definitely discuss it offline, but those are things that just, we wanna make sure that if we bring somebody in for finances, they're able to get it so we can start gradually moving it to the village of Dalton and not depending on conspiracy.
Like, uh, good point, trustee. It's, uh, like I said earlier, and I know the mayor has heard this from me in that is we are looking, if the village can hire more employees, employees that are capable of doing the job though, let's be clear. I mean, putting a body in and if the body doesn't do a good job, it just doubles up our work. So we're looking to get more help that the village can pay for, obviously potentially. But I could tell you it's difficult cause you won't be the only community finding a finance director that can be here, you know, five days a week, you know, and, uh, evenings and whenever else, uh, that would go a long way. But finding one that actually is gonna roll up their sleeves and actually do the work, that will be the challenges that you'll find. Uh, the current, the current employee is not of that caliber as far as her experience is concerned. But we can still utilize her cause I've always said we could use an AP person, a payroll person, which would relieve us of a lot of, uh, uh, routine responsibilities that we have to do. Cause payroll comes around every couple of weeks and so bills get on the bill listing. And of course, we know the, the volume of bills that we have on the bill, that, uh, the old bills. So I agree with you and I'm glad to hear that the trustees are really, uh, going to try to help us get more staff.
Yes, that's my next one. So, I mean, we can go into it that, uh, we're gonna discuss possibly, uh, finance accounts receivable person because we will be building up our finance department. So I'm not even just going into a finance director because, which it is kind of very hard to seek out a good person, especially under municipal. So, um, the next thing that I will be discussing is looking for a finance accounts receivable person to come in also to try to help, to make sure that we build up the finance department for our community.
Yes, I, I totally agree. Getting someone that can do that work, I mean, the bank reconciliation's taken a, a substantial amount of our time. The, and like I said, we are involved with a lot of the, the day-to-day routine. Not to mention meetings with, sometimes with, uh, as Lauren will, uh, have to meet with department heads. And, and there's just a lot of different things. Everything touches finances at the end of the day when you're running a municipality. So whether it's going into collective bargaining, uh, we just recently worked on the budget, working on the, on the tax anticipation loans. We have, uh, uh, the tax levy is gonna be coming up, uh, trying to do projections on where we're at today. I know I've had conversations with the mayor, uh, our options on revenues. I'm gonna be very honest, they're very limited unless we get very aggressive on the revenues. So we are, uh, looking at ways to, to reduce payroll. I'm looking at some other ways. I've been contacting banks. Believe me, it's not easy. The prior administration burned a lot of bridges. There's a lot less people out there, a lot less financial institutions willing to, to do business with Dalton. We have to show them that we've changed, uh, not just in appearances, but the reality of what we're doing as we show that. And that's, that just takes time. You're not gonna be able to say, oh, we got new administration. Everybody forget all of our prior sins, vendors that didn't get paid, lawsuits that remain unpaid. And we wanna borrow money from the banks. Uh, that just doesn't happen. It, uh, we have to rebuild that confidence in the, in the financial community and that's what we're trying to do. We do it with changing of the bank with, uh, is it Bever- it's Beverly? Wintrust, Beverly Bank, they are really working aggressively with us. Uh, so that's a start because one of the problems we had is, uh, when you, um, I don't wanna get into all the detail cause I can be here all day talking about the details of the finances. But we have a plan in place that, uh, we sat down with and we're gonna make sure we can schedule the time properly to do this. And then we'll just have to address the other, the other needs as they become available. We'll talk to the mayor on some of the others things. Like I said, typically on a day-to-day when we're out here, I know that there are a lot of other issues that come up. As you just mentioned, we're in an MFT audit. One of these, uh, you do not want to have to give back money on MFT. So we're working with, uh, with the engineers, with staff here, trying to pull the information together so that we can keep what we already gotten. And, uh, there's, you know, like I said, we're finished, trying to finish up the audit. And as you, as everyone know, well, maybe not everybody knows, but the prior auditors, when they got close to being done, they pulled out. And the state had to work with us to find an auditing firm because again, not a lot of CPA firms were interested in coming in to in the village of, uh, Dalton's finances. I, we, our firm also does auditing. And I can tell you that when you're out doing an audit of a municipality and you have the press that was out here in the past, it's gonna make, I'd say, partners like me very sketchy because, uh, iffy about wanting to give an opinion. Uh, because if there is anything wrong, I can tell you, the insurance carriers, if they do any payouts, uh, the first people they go after is not the ones that committed the crime. It's they'll, they'll also go after the auditors cause they're gonna say, you should have uncovered it. So a lot of the auditing firms just, they're unsure what they read in the paper, what they hear about, the internal controls. Those are things that, uh, make auditors nervous as far as are all the money, is the money actually being spent properly? So there's a lot of different things we're working on. This is just some of it. And, uh, but I did have two conversations this past, uh, couple of days, uh, Friday and Tattered, well, Friday for sure with the mayor. Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, uh, where we were addressing these issues. Uh, we also had your, uh, village administrator on, on, on the phone as well on how we can put together a plan that is going to not just be on our side, but also on the commitments of the village side because we don't get the stuff back in a timely basis that also slows us down.
Okay, thank you.
No specific questions?
Did that conclude both, um, the accounting firm and accountable or?
No, I wanna talk, I mean, he brought it up, but I just wanna just elaborate on why I'm asking.
Okay, would you still like some other?
Uh-uh, that's fine.
Okay, thanks very much for coming.
Thank you.
Um, and I would say, uh, thank you for bringing this topic to, uh, the board. And of course, I think, uh, John, everybody, uh, knows the conversations we've had as well as I've shared with the board. My, my feeling about what we need to do to, uh, progress and aggressively progress this department.
Um, so for letter D, um, which is, uh, discussion of finance accounts receivable. This is actually, uh, us discussing possibly hiring someone else in the finance department. Right now, um, we have one person in the finance department and we rely heavily on the accounting firm. But of course they have an hourly rate and we need to bring, um, someone on staff. So we're building our finance department back up so we can release as much, um, much responsibility that the accounting firm has. We would like to have it internally versus externally. So I know it's something that we have to talk about. Um, we did just pass a budget. But, um, potentially putting out a job description to hire a finance accounts receivable person would help us greatly because the amount of money that we would pay for a salary would be less than what we're spending. But we still would need the accounting firm, but they'll start moving those, um, responsibilities over to someone internally. So.
I'm in agreement on that. I think we will wanna work up a job description. I don't know, are you looking for consensus from the board as well, trustee?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, to ask the board, any questions from the board members?
Yes. So with that being, uh, said, conspiracy, you guys will be training this individual, will be bringing on? You know, charger?
We'll see how much time.
Yeah, we wanted to negotiate on price. I would just hope you give us a, a good price.
Thank you. Is that the line that says ouch? Okay, any additional questions, trustees?
Is there, uh, I think I, did I hear you say that the last bank rep was June, July? What was it? June is the last one?
It's, it's, the, the last one, we're, the financial, everything is all done, just to do, we have bank, we have a lot of bank accounts.
All right, somewhere between 15, 20 bank accounts. Some of those accounts are very minimum activity. They're already reconciled through the end of the month. Although they, they would have been reconciled already through August. But when we talk about reconciliations, there's some big accounts, the biggest one being the clerk's deposit account, uh, and the vendor account that we pay bills out of. Those take a, uh, the clerk's account takes the most amount of time because that's the one that gets the deposits from the clerk's office. That's all reconciled through the end of June. And we're in the process of completing July. And we also started on August right away cause I sat down and said some of these things we could start doing simultaneously to get caught up.
So just for clarification, because I'm sure to be all on YouTube and everywhere else, the clerk's account is from the water department. So those are the water department because somebody would be like, well, why the clerks, why the clerks filling all this money? What they doing? So I, I wanna be clear, that is the water department because that's collection. So anything that comes in, if they come in to do anything from licensing, housing, uh, water, the water bills, that's, it's called the clerk's account because it used to be the clerk that was the collects, the. it used to be the clerk that was the collects, the collector of the village. She doesn't have that responsibility. Our current clerk doesn't have that responsibility. But prior to, the clerk used to be the collector. So that's why it was cut out. It's it's named the clerk's account. I just want to be transparent about that before somebody say something.
Another question. Is that normal to be that that many months behind? With the amount of money that's being paid to the conspiracy group, is it normal to be three, three, four months behind? Is that normal? Is that how you normally are behind in other because you're in multiple villages throughout the South Suburbs. Is it normal to be three, four months behind?
Question's fair. There are some accounts that uh some villages where we're current and there's other ones where we're even further behind. It's really what's going on at that specific municipality at the time when we came in, how we're trying to get things caught up, what is being prioritized. Uh but there's even some new entities that we just came on board where they didn't even have financial statements. They didn't have budgets actual. So we're helping them put that together and that's going back almost a year and a half. So they operate typically their whole year without a without financial statements with a budget. Is it typical? I try not to make it typical. I'll be very honest. I want to be caught up because that makes these it makes decision making for the board. Well, might not make it easier. At least it will give you a clearer picture financially instead of hearing me always saying this guy is wrong and you'll see it on the financial statements. So our goal here is to try to get the 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 books up to date.
If I can interject too, because we as we've talked through our plans, the mandate is that it's going to be done within thirty days as we agree. So that so that's not what we're gonna, that's not what we're gonna accept. So we're okay. All right, that that was I wanted to hear. I was that was going to be my next question moving forward. This won't happen again.
Yeah, so we that was one of the things that we proposed to the mayor was to start training um the new individual that's here for a lot of the tracing of those deposits because there's a lot of reconciling items in that account that we always have to adjust for. So if we have her here helping us do that, we should have no problems meeting that deadline.
Any other, any other questions, trustee? Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Was that did that conclude all your comments on trustee Belcher on item D? Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So we wanted to get a consensus vote to move forward with a job description as well as posting for accounts receivable. So we'll just do it collectively. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Hearing none, we'll move that for carry that forward to the next agenda. Next item up we have is the discussion on the billing tax amusement. Well, uh unfortunately not at this time, ma'am. Yes, no, 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 but that but that's not. Normally we'll follow. We we did the presentation previously because it was something new coming in the community, but we won't open up for question after each of agenda item. Yes, sir. We do have a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Uh and then we allow so all board members are present afterwards. So if there are questions, we will be here to answer any questions that are had. Additionally, the board members will be available for the next few weeks. There is no action being taken at this meeting. So we have um between now and another two weeks that all questions, concerns, or anything else can be addressed prior to any final action being taken. There's plenty, yes, sir. Opportunity. So again, I would say any questions that uh anyone, anybody would have. We I and I'm sure all board members will be pre physically present here. We're not going anywhere after this meeting. We're not uh in fact, we'll have to make sure everybody's phone numbers are posted vehemently. Lauren, can you post it on the screen right now? Okay, never mind. No, but board members are not going anywhere. Again, uh this is also part of the process of committee of the whole or the reason that we've gone to committee of the whole is that this way we are able to have our discussions openly. The community can see the board's thought process in real time without us taking action. So that way, once the meeting is over, all board members are here to still answer any questions that are that are had or any questions people may have. Over the next two weeks, we have additional time for more questions to come in, whether that be a phone call through email or in person at Village Hall. So we have more than adequate time to address any questions that the community, business owners alike may have before any agenda item coming up for a final uh vote on October. October sixth. Okay. So hearing up next, we're going to go to the discussion on the item D discussion on the billing tax billing for amusement tax. Uh trustee Belcher?
Um I thought the village administrator was going to be here, but this was just.
Administrator's right.
Oh, he just he just slid on in here. Because I was gonna say he wasn't in. Um this was just um in discussion about um the current ordinance that we have in place for amusement tax. And it was, I think it was actually oh six, I believe, was it oh six that the amusement tax took place? And that was when at the time Mayor Shaw was trying to put the hotel over on one hundred and forty second and Cottage Grove. So we already have an amusement tax on on file in the village of Dalton. Um since we have obtained the Pope's house and we know that there have been several buses that are um bringing people over for tours, we are supposed to uh receive eight percent of whatever they're charging. So we discussed it about making sure that anyone that is bringing or doing tours to the Pope's house at this current time that they are being billed for it appropriately. Um they did in the ordinance though have a billing um scale which I see now. So instead of us we were talking about is fifty five people on the bus or whatever. They have a billing scale uh scale for it because a lot of people are asking, okay, y'all purchased a home, but how are we gonna receive funds off of it? So we do have a ordinance that was already in place, zero six dash three four two. Um that's on the books and at that time, eight percent, and that was high back then. So but that seems like the going rate right now. And it has a scale of uh how much these tours will be charged. So we will be able to bill the invoice for those.
The only thing that I would add is we put together a process um it looks like the police department becomes the first point of contact for the tours that are coming by. So we've put together a process for an application invoicing to make sure that we can collect the eight percent. But not too much to add to that. You nailed it.
Okay, we just want to make sure that, you know, this is committee at a whole. We want to make sure that we're able to talk about what are some of the concerns that people have been asking us or talking to us about.
Thank you, trustee. Uh any other trustees have comments or questions on this? Yeah, trustee Stan? Yeah, that question was so good, you should have asked it twice.
I'm getting like, damn, we got the mics right here and we not using them. Uh just the question was like we have the ice skating rink, I mean, we can make some revenue off that also.
Yes, it's in the ordinance. Skating is part of amusement means and it goes on with all of the different ones. So we all have a copy of it, but the skating rink, once it becomes operable and we are able to start renting it out or whatever, because at the end of the day, we pay one point three million dollars for it. We're gonna have to get our money back at some some point. So um the skating rink is.
It's a good venue to make uh revenue on.
Yes, it's part of the amusement tax also.
And and trustee Stan, to your point, since the last conversation that we had, we've started to have other conversations with realtors that can help us to market it. Um and more to come, but I heard you.
Well, I thank you, sir, because you're very detailed. I appreciate that.
Sometimes.
Okay, any additional uh comments, questions from the board? Hearing none, uh we will conclude. We'll conclude that item on the agenda and go next to item F. Item F is the discussion on the approval to open up a separate of separate bank account for Pope Leo activity. Uh so this is one that we have been in discussion. I'll put it up here uh to seek the board's consent on opening up a separate bank account. Uh this account would be for many, for there are many individuals that in that indicated they would like to be supportive of the village of Dalton in efforts to build up the area, specifically the area connected to Pope Leo's childhood home as well as improvements in the Dal village of Dalton. And we want to make sure that if we accept any contributions or any donations that we have one account that can be foiled so that anyone who would make a donation can see their donate their that funds going into the account and also responsibly see that any funds that are used from that account are applied directly to the per to the purposes that we've laid out. One item that we has been in discussion has been uh a repainting of the water tower to say village of welcome to village of Dalton, home of Pope Leo. Uh but there are many other items that we can move towards. Uh however, if we accept any money anticipated or for that purpose that anybody, any resident or anybody in the community wants to donate, we want to make sure that there is a transparent process that the money's coming in and being used exactly for that purpose. Uh so that's why I put this up to ask for the board's consent that we open a separate bank account strictly for that purpose. I will uh ask any questions at this time? Okay, hearing no questions, I will ask that we uh I'll entertain or ask for a consent vote that we move this to the October agenda. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Hearing none, that will go towards October's agenda. Uh next, item G, a discussion regarding ordinance twenty five dash zero zero three, amending title two, chapter fourteen historical commission of the municipal code of the village of Dalton. This would be zero zero five, I'm sorry. Two five dash zero zero five, amending title two, chapter fourteen, historical commission. Okay, item item two five dash zero zero five. Uh this was placed on here uh as what as has been discussed, the creation of what I called a steering committee would actually be by ordinance, a historical committee. This historical committee would be established, composed of seven individuals who would vet uh all the different opportunities within that area of Pope Leo's childhood home to make sure that all opportunities that have presented are properly vetted uh and propose and propose a solution or a path to the village board of trustees on what they see to be the most viable. As I mentioned, multiple opportunities. We have uh historical landmark status, museum status, uh business enterprise zone, Tiff Tiff districting area partnerships with other nonprofits. So these are some of the things that have come or been proposed to the village at this time. And while all are sound feasible or good options independently, we can't do every one of them. So we think all need to be vetted to their thorough conclusion by a panel of individuals that we think will bring additional resources as well. Uh so I'll pause there and ask board if they have had the opportunity to review the ordinance as proposed or have any questions at this time. Hearing no questions, I will answer, I will ask for a consensus vote that we move this ordinance to October's agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Hearing none, as we will move this to October's agenda. Items H and I. Oh, thank you very much. You're good. We're gonna go back to item attorney, I hope you're not on the clock. Attorney Jacqueline Aggie, item B, please, we would like to proceed with the presentation regarding abandoned property.
Did you want me to just say that?
Sure.
Okay, hello, everyone. Happy Monday. Um I apologize for my tardiness today, but I wouldn't have missed it for the world, okay? Um I would like to thank our attorney, well, I'd like to thank Ms. Jacqueline Aggie for joining us today. A a few months ago, we had a housing, our very first housing committee meeting. Uh we will be holding them quarterly. During the committee meeting and over the last few months, a lot of the residents' concerns have been regarding the eyesores in our village, right? We um so I am aware of that. Um as the on the housing committee, what we decided to do is we are bringing in a Ms. Aggie McGee so she can come and tell us about a housing program that may uh work for the village. So this is a part of, this is one of the processes that we're considering or at the moment, and we'd like to have the residents hear her out so that the residents can be part of the process also regarding moving forward.
Thank you, trustee. So the program is called the abandoned property acquisition program or the APAP program. It's a program that some of the South suburbs use. Uh the program is used to acquire abandoned vacant boarded up homes um and get them back on the tax rolls, get them back into a habitable habitable condition. It's done by any applicant, whether it's a resident of Dalton or somebody outside of Dalton, comes forward to the village and puts up what's called an escrow. That escrow amount is something that's determined by ordinance. So it will be a fixed amount. And then the village then takes that property through the circuit court proceedings to get ownership of the property. Now, from just listening to the meeting here, I think that you're gonna love this part. Doesn't cost a penny from the village. All of the money that is used to take this through the circuit court, all of the money comes out of the escrow that the applicant put up. So once the village gets uh the ownership of the property, they get all the back taxes abated and then they transfer it over to the applicant, whoever it is that applied for that property. The applicant then has sixty days to bring the property up into a habitable condition. At that point, they can sell the property, they can rent the property um or they can live in the property, however they want to go about it. This also includes any commercial property, any vacant land um or the the residential homes. I think that is the very basic idea of the program. I I think the most amazing part of the program is it gets these properties back on the tax rolls, it gets them back into the community, and it's at no cost to the village.
Open from questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Is that trustee Belcher?
Yes. Um you said that they will put up an escrow, we would abate the taxes. So how are they, how is the application process? Like would Dalton residents be first to obtain properties? How is the application process?
So it is a first come, first served basis. Um and and also the other thing that I should point out is that it's the applicant's duty to go out and find properties that may qualify for the program. There's three different qual uh qualificat- or I'm sorry, uh three different things that the property would need to qualify for. This up to them to go out and find the property. So if you're talking about Dalton residents, especially residents that have been here for a long time, they're gonna know the property is a lot better than somebody coming from way up north that's not familiar with the 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 village.
So how do you get paid?
Out of the escrow that the people put up.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, it's a good ques- it's a good question. Uh there's a very minimal cost to just start up the program and that's simply drafting the ordinances, um the the forms, the applications, things like that. It's a very minimal cost, but anything after that comes out of the escrows.
And would the board be able to see these pro like? So we kind of, if mo anybody that lives here has lived here for a while, we kind of know what properties are.
Sure.
Abandoned, which have been um deteriorating for years or whatever. But would it just be like a list of properties that we would see priced? Or and I'll just use an example of somebody in the in the audience, uh Mr. Lee or say, hey, this property three doors down from me has been vacant for nine, ten years and I want to know if it qualifies or something like that. That's.
That is exactly how it would be. Uh but just so you you know, and this is a way to kind of make sure that these properties, once we convey them to the applicants are able to get rehabbed. At the beginning of the application process, the applicant will have to show proof of funds, usually to fix fifty to sixty thousand, knowing that once we transfer the property to them, that they do have the financial stability to be able to make the repairs and get it back on the tax rolls. Um and then they will also have to show the proof of funds at the time of transfer as well. So to answer your question, any resident, I think, did you say Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee is more than welcome to uh, oh, is that Mr. Lee there?
You got it, Mr. Lee, you got it.
Yeah, is more than welcome uh to to apply. And you know what? As as long as he has the financial backing to do it and he's got the gumption to do it, why not? You know, it's an amazing program to where um residents not only can get properties back on the tax rolls next door to them that their extended family can live in or it's a rental property where they live right next door, so they're keeping an eye on it twenty four seven. Or they're selling it and they're they're not only better in the community, they're making a profit.
You said there was a different, uh, question that they would have to be, qualified to approve, uh, proof of funds, what else?
So the, the legal criteria in order for the village to obtain these properties is one, it has to be abandoned. Okay, we can assume if they're boarded up, they're been, they're abandoned. Number two, they're dangerous and unsafe. If they're boarded up, they're gonna be dangerous and unsafe. And then the third is a two-pronged, it's an or. So either it has to be, uh, tax delinquent for two or more years, or it has to have an outstanding water balance for two or more years. Pretty much narrows it down, doesn't it? And again, you know, I'm just, I, again, pointing out, uh, the, the gentleman from Rutgers, uh, was Rutgers, right? Uh, properties like that, that are commercial, industrial vacant properties, you know, that, that they wanna put the money in, whatever that escrow is, the, the board and the mayor determines it is, he could get a new gym for fifteen thousand dollars, as long as he brings it up to code and gets it habitable within six to nine months, it's his. And the other thing too with the commercial properties is, the thing that's holding a lot of these properties back is they're so encumbered with taxes. Because it's, you know, ten years of twenty thousand dollars a year taxes.
Can, can we make criteria, like i- is it your standard criteria or can we make?
No, no, no. So just so you know, I didn't wanna jump in while she was talking. But just so you know, trustee Belcher, and just because I know you all may, um, access, have other questions also. So for the most part, and that's why I didn't really send you all any paperwork today, because I wanted her to be able to present, because you all may have the same questions that the residents have, I'm sure. Um, but overall, trustee Belcher, we will, we will decide in regards to the escrow, we will, as a village and a board, we would just put certain things into play. This is just her, the program that she has, she's just giving us the blueprint. But it's up to us as the board to decide how we want things and what we want, just so you know. Sorry.
Absolutely.
So, so in other words, we would design our own program, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Question I got is, uh, you said if somebody goes and finds a property, what if, what if, I mean, and everybody's not maybe, real estate investors are looking to buy another house, but what if that's that property on my block that I've been trying to get, that's been vacant for a long time, but if there's nobody to buy it, there's nothing we can do about it? Cause you say they have to, somebody has to find the property and then, then have to say, I want this property. But what if there's a property that nobody wants, that's empty, that needs to get put back on the tax roll or some way, somehow? How do you, how do we handle that?
I've been working in this, I, absolutely. And I can tell you that I've been working in this program, uh, golly, I don't know, uh, five years now, uh, for several different municipalities and can't recall a single property that's come up. That, uh, there has been a property, I take it back to where it was so structurally unsound that the municipality would not let it be rehabbed. But you have investors all over the place that are willing to pay ten, fifteen thousand dollars for a structure to rehab that they dump seventy into and they sell for two hundred. So is it possible, what, what are your options then? The village could still pay out of their own pocket to get the property and then maybe rehab it on their own? Or I know other municipalities have, uh, charities that can come in and rehab the properties.
So you said we were marketed to, if you're looking for an abandoned property in Dalton, come to this program, that's how it would be.
And I, I can assure you, trustee, you're not gonna have to market hard.
And, and just so you know, trustee Steves, because I think trustee Belcher asked.
Did you put an S on the end of my name?
I said Steve.
I'm traumatized by that, I'm traumatized by that.
Trustee Belcher asked, um, also, because I see you all kinda had a similar question, and this for the residents also. Um, in regards to our housing program, there's gonna be, uh, different components. So this is just one component. Um, as you all know, a few years ago, we tried to bring in the, uh, South Suburban Land Bank as a additional component also. So this is just the start. Um, over time, we'll see, we're just trying to figure out what works, what doesn't work. And to add to that, um, as a village, she and I discussed, as we'll provide her with a list. So we've already hit the village administrator, we have them and the housing, working on the abandoned homes, um, as a collective, just the list so that we'll have more inventory. And then once they submit that, we submit the inventory to her, that'll be an add-on. So for the most part, the residents finding a home is just like an added bonus, right? They, I mean, you know, first person, early bird gets the worm. But, uh, we will be sending her some also, but we'll all decide it as a board, just so you all know.
Question for you also, what other municipalities are you in with this, at this program is in?
So it's been in Chicago, it started in Chicago Heights, um, and it's been there, I believe, eight years now, possibly seven years. And I wanna say it's close to two hundred homes. That they have got, uh, back on the tax rolls that have been rehabbed and, and now have certificate of occupancies. It's been a huge success there. Um, Burnham, um, Glenwood is actually starting it, uh, Lansing has been looking into it. I think, I think that was all.
And this will be a contract with you, correct? We'll be entering the contract?
Yeah.
Is it an amount of years or how does it work?
We can work on that separate, yeah, we can work on it separate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I have another question.
Okay.
So will we be a, um, cause I, I heard trustee Norwood said, so it's our program. So we would build the ordinance of how this is gonna be implemented before it gets to you?
My, my suggestion would be that we, uh, we'll build it, or build the documentation, bring it to the, not this October board meeting, but the following committee of the whole. So that way we'll have an opportunity for everybody to see what the ordinance and the program would look like. And then should that be acceptable at that time, over to the November agenda? Any additional questions, uh, trustees, trustee Tammy?
So again, that's something, yeah, that, that the board gets to decide. Um, I can tell you in, uh, Chicago Heights, it's one year, within the first thirty days, you have to pull permits, you have to begin work. And you have to actually actively start working on it, but you do have one year to get your certificate of occupancy. And I can tell you that the municipalities work with investors, you know, especially if we have a bad winter to where they can't do the roofing or they can't do the cement, you know? As long as you're, first of all, as long as you're keeping the outside looking good, you got the boards off the windows, you got windows in the windows, you know, the municipality is gonna stay off your back as long as you're moving along.
I just have one concern, because it sounds like an amazing program. My issue is just that, and maybe it's because it relates to me, that this program starts and investors get it, they're not living here, so they're gonna either send it to somebody that is gonna buy it and rent it out, and then there's influx of renters, or making it another halfway house. So that's why I keep asking about us putting the ordinance together, because if it is, yes, we would love for it to be on the tax roll, but we, I think that we should implement something as if they're buying, they need to stay in it for five years or something. Because just getting the house and flipping it, and then I got twelve renters next to me, not describing any renters or anything, but I'm just saying, for me, because I have a halfway house across the street from me, which I consider a problem, that we make sure that we just put the ordinance together where it reflects what our community wants to look like.
Yeah.
Just so you know, trustee Belcher, so, uh, Aggie and I, uh, did discuss that, because that was a concern of mine also. But that's why we're gonna have different components, because it is extremely important that, uh, regarding the program as a whole, Dalton residents have some type of, um, first dips in regards to the housing in the community that they live in. So this, when I say that this is just one of the components, this literally is just one of the components, just so that we can get started. But as the board, um, I did want her, and I didn't even send you all any information, because you all are residents also. So I figured this way, um, she can kinda just start from scratch, kinda how she gave me the information and you all can ask those questions. But we will have a housing committee meeting coming up also, uh, within the next few months. So at the, during the housing committee, residents, please join us if you all have any questions and concerns. But just know this is, um, I, an idea of a start. We want to ultimately have, um, different parts of the program so that everyone can benefit. Because we don't, we do understand that, and she, and, uh, Ms. McGee, Aggie said it to me, she said, we can set the limits where one person can only buy two houses or, so we'll, whatever we decide, you know, we tell her and then she'll put it all together for us prior to moving forward.
Yeah, and, and that point, otherwise you're gonna get the big investors that are just gonna swoop in because they have the cash flow and they have the proof of funds. So if you limit it to, to per applicant or, you know, however you guys wanna do it, that's absolutely something that's adjustable.
And that's the good thing, we get a chance to structure this here.
Absolutely.
Ordinance, so it's in our hands, so.
Yep. And I'll go to all board members individually. I know we have our housing committee chairs, so I've kinda been speaking with them already, filling the man, but I'll individually go to board members, I just wanna heard of, present first, because I figured you all have more questions afterwards. And then from there, we'll kinda just start moving forward.
Any, any additional questions at this time? Well, hearing none, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aggie, for your time, we truly appreciate you coming out. Don't, we're gonna figure this thing out, uh, one way or the other.
Think we're gonna go, the next two items on the agenda go together are the discussion on settlements that, uh, the board had already, had already approved. Um, this, uh, we approved the settlement offer at our last board meeting. Uh, looking for, they were given a payment structure on how to execute the approved settlement. I was just looking for consent on items eight, the bottom two, I scratched them out, so I can't see which. H and I, it's for the board to pay out consistent with the payment structure, which would begin on September eighteenth. So I don't know how, if the board members had a chance to review that, if not, I can pause and we. Yes, it was a payment structure over, uh, one was over three months and one was over six months. Yeah, and I seen them, then we will, we'll, we'll have to pause at this moment, we'll pull those off, I'll discuss individually. We'll ask for, uh, consent if the board should so approve at that time, so we'll remove those items right now. Okay, next item on the agenda, mayor's report. So for the mayor's report, I just had a couple of items that I wanted to comment on. One is, one is an item, I'm just gonna make sure that I, I state it, at, at as many meetings as humanly possible. Uh, obviously, this is not, this is a very non-political forum, I just wanted to always remind everybody to show up and vote at every election. So I like to tell people that Dalton votes, it gives a great representation at every election. It shows our state legislators, our county legislators, that we are an engaged community. So I just always want to consistently remind everybody to let the neighbors know, get out and vote at every election. The next upcoming election is in March, on March?
Seventeenth.
March seventeenth. So no matter, research all candidates, do your due diligence, but please just make sure everybody knows that Dalton votes. Uh, second comment that I have is I want to encourage everybody, I think trustee Steve mentioned earlier about our social media platforms, our website, Facebook, YouTube, uh, I think, uh, Warren and team are doing a fantastic job with making content and getting it out there. We wanna make sure that everybody is able to, uh, become engaged. Um, there was mention of the community calendar, that was actually a new initiative, our chief of staff, Williams, hey, wave, chief of staff Williams, cause she likes to be bashful, um, begun putting together and working with the team to get out there. Uh, so the direction for that is that the calendar will always be a work in progress. Um, always trying to work with, of course, our library board, our park district, we'll integrate more with the school districts as well. So that way, as items come up, we can try to bring it all into one consolidated location to make things much easier for Dalton residents and the Dalton community. Similarly, we'll be working towards, as part of Dalton United, making sure that we, that we think this can reduce the overlap of multiple events for the same purpose within the community. So if there are, I, if there is an event that's happening that we know about at the library, the village will not similarly host an event. We will support, um, sponsor or donate to that and make that a collaborative effort, uh, similar, same thing with the park district. So, uh, we really want to make sure that we are promoting synergy and, and efficiency in these difficult times. Um, next thing we, I think, uh, tea with the trustees. Uh, trustee Tammy Brown gave a very riveting, uh, and passionate, I would say, uh, speech on just making sure, I think, for the, for the last three, for the last three to four months, our team has been out and been giving, our team, uh, in particular trustee Tammy Brown, trustee Stan Brown as well, um, out in the community and looking at everything that was, that's going well and areas that need to be improved. And we've given a lot of warnings, a ton of warnings, uh, upon the administration change. We mentioned that we would start with warnings. Uh, well, now we are going to, again, elevate our standard and tickets will begin to start being issued. And some have already started. This is not, uh, a Gestapo tactic by any stretch of the imagination, but it, uh, we have gone through the steps of making sure that we're giving people fair warning to bring things up to code. And we have to make sure that, that compliance is beginning to happen. So, uh, as the board, we, we will work with anybody that needs assistance to the degree that we're cap, capable of doing so. But we also need to make sure we're getting the same partnership back from the residents in the community. So, uh, we really wanna make sure that from the village, we are upping our standard and increasing the bar. And it's happening across the board, um, from the community, the residents, as well as what we are looking towards with our employees, who we think are doing a fantastic job, but we will let, let everybody know that we are looking, we are going to make Dalton a better community. Two other items we have, I want to thank and highlight, I think we've had a few different commissions. Uh, we have our village chaplain, uh, Minister White, along with the co-chaplain, Pastor Fleishman, who have been, uh, who have taken the, their assignment, uh, very, very serious and hit the ground running, running hard. And I wanted to say, I wanna acknowledge, of course, the work that they're doing. Our police and fire commission had a few meeting, had a meeting recently, within the last week. And that was their second meeting as well. I would say our planning and zoning commission is, uh, from, with trustee Tammy Brown and members of there have to hit the ground running as well. And I wanna highlight the engagement and activity and thank everybody and let the community know that was not just, uh, this board of trustees, clerk, uh, myself, but we strongly encourage the engagement, participation, uh, because together is how we raise the community. And I'm great, grateful to see everybody who comes and serves on these panels and the passion and pride that they take in the work that they're doing for this community. So I wanna say thank you for that. Last and definitely not least, uh, the village has decided that we will be bringing onboard an interim fire chief. So we begin, the interim fire chief will be sworn in tomorrow. Quentin Curtis, who was formerly our fire inspector, will be assuming the role of fire, interim fire chief, uh, for at least the next six month period. Uh, so he will be present with us at our upcoming board meeting and will make sure that everybody's able to give a nice warm welcome. And it wouldn't it be glad, isn't it great to know that we're gonna have a fire chief and new direction of the fire department already does tremendous work. Uh, they work hard, they show up at all events, they are extremely community oriented, and I think this will, again, raise the bar for our community. So those are my announcements for this evening. Uh, there is no executive session that we have on here, so having closed out the mayor's report, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. I, I wanna make sure I, I restate, anybody, because we did have several items on here, myself, deputy clerk, all trustees, uh, village administrator, we will remain here to entertain or answer as many questions as humanly possible. So we're not going anywhere, so if there's anything that came up that you have questions about, feel free to ask it at, uh, feel free to ask it to one of us or over the next few weeks prior to the next board meeting, so that we don't take any action without your inclusion. Uh, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn at this time.
I'm moved to.
I heard the motion, was that trustee Tammy?
Belcher.
Oh, trustee Belcher, second, trustee Norwood, uh, deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Sure. Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Trustee Steve? Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes is absent. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-eight.